Good evening and welcome to the March 9, 2023, meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Gail Smythe.
Here.
Jackie Savina.
Here.
Skylar Quinn.
Here.
Andrew Romerdaugh, Brian Flynn, and Scott Myers are excused. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business are minutes for Wednesday, February 8, 2023. May I have a positive motion, please? Moved by Mr. Quinn, seconded by Ms. Savina. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, the minutes are approved and we'll move on to the special order of business. Are there any disclosures this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is the annual election of officers. And due to the lack of members at this meeting, I would entertain a motion to move this item to the April meeting. Moved by Mr. Quinn, seconded by Ms. Savina. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, election of officers will be moved to the April meeting. Nothing on the consent agenda this evening, no appearance requests have been received, no unfinished business, nothing on the regular agenda, which brings us to public hearings. And because there are so few of us here this evening, there is what's called a short board, only five members. And because of that, we will offer a postponement to the next regular meeting. And this should occur within 30 days, which does not require re-noticing the case, new public hearing notices and advertising. If the petitioner is willing to postpone but unable to attend the next available meeting within 30 days, the petitioner is then offered a one-time-only option to choose the next date certain that he or she can attend at no extra fee. When the postponement is requested by the petitioner, there's a rescheduling fee and a new public hearing date shall be determined by the Planning Division. This will put their case in the next available cutoff date queue as if they were submitting their case for the first time. That being said, I would like to poll the petitioners for this evening's cases, there's three, all three are variants, to see if you would want to postpone or continue on. So is the petitioner for the first case Victor Knott here? Would you please come forward and turn on your phone?
Yes, my name's Victor Knott.
And would you want to postpone your case?
Yes, I would. I'd like to postpone it to the April 13 meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, Heidi and Jesse Osby? Osby? Some or another?
I would like to postpone as well.
Okay. Could you state your name?
I'm Heidi Osby.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then Lisa Ernest? Ernest?
Oh, it's on.
Okay. Yeah. State your name.
My name is Lisa Ernest, and we would like to proceed this evening.
You would like to proceed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So that brings us to the case. The first case we're going to hear this evening then is Case 2023-0023. The applicant is Lisa Ernest. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Madam Chair, on February 10, 2023, a total of 101 public hearing notices were mailed in accordance with the procedures of AMC 2103020H notice. As of this writing, as of the writing of the report, no public comments had been received. The Basher Community Council did not provide comments on this case. You do, however, though, have a late-on-the-table comment that came in after the report.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing and hearing none, we will proceed. Will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lisa Ernest is requesting a dimensional variance from AMC 2107020 to allow a single-family residence to encroach 15.66 feet into the required 25-foot riparian edge zone of Stuckigan Creek. The property owner just finalized a plating action, Case S12700, to remove a plat note restricting any disturbance within 100 feet of the mean high-water line of Stuckigan Creek. With the removal of this plat note, the buildable area of this lot has increased to a size to allow the construction of a single-family residence with the necessary on-site systems required. Stuckigan Creek bifurcates this lot basically in two parts, with the northern portion being inaccessible from any right-of-way or other access. The lot is 117,888 square feet with approximately 60,000 square feet south of the creek inaccessible from a public right-of-way, which is South Wind Circle. The remaining area includes the 25-foot streamside zone and 25-foot riparian edge zone setbacks, in addition to the hillside north subdivision covenants requiring a 40-foot setback from all property lines to structures. This increased requirement is greater than current Title 21 setback for the R10 district reducing the buildable area. In order for the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals to approve the variance, the application must state with particularity the relief sought and must specify the facts or circumstances that are alleged to show that the application substantially meets the following eight standards. Standard A: There exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property, including but not limited to streams, wetlands, or slope, and those circumstances are not applicable to other land in the same zoning district. Standard A is met. The subject lot has some slope running downhill from south to north with Stuckigan Creek bifurcating the lot in two. The lot is 117,888 square feet with approximately 60,000 square feet south of the creek inaccessible from public right-of-way. The remaining area includes the 25-foot streamside zone and 25-foot riparian edge zone setbacks. The hillside north subdivision covenants also require a 40-foot setback from all property lines to structures, which is greater than what is required in the R10 district. Standard B: Because of these physical circumstances, the strict application of this code creates an exceptional or undue hardship upon the property owner and would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of the zoning ordinances. Standard B is not met. The physical circumstances described above do not create an exceptional or undue hardship on the property owner. The R10 district definition found in your packet on pages five and six, consider the hardships and uniqueness of this lot and the need for creative design when developing. This lot size is reduced by the location of the creek and setbacks, but is still an area of approximately 60,000 square feet or 1.37 acres. This size meets the minimum lot size for the R10 district with a slope of less than 20%. See Table 21.04-2 on page six of the staff packet. The applicant is currently showing a footprint of approximately 6,468 square feet or a 66x98 box in a north-south orientation. The use of a creative design to incorporate the uniqueness of this lot and a reduction in the size of the proposed footprint or change in orientation would still allow the applicant the rights commonly enjoyed by other properties to construct a single-family residence in the R10 district. Standard C: The hardship is not self-imposed and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and such conditions and circumstances do not merely constitute inconvenience. Standard C is not met. The hardship is self-imposed. The remaining lot area available for construction of a single-family structure is available to the applicant. Following AMC 2104020P, again, found on pages five and six of your packets, design in the R10 district is to be creative and to incorporate the uniqueness and character of the lot. A reduction in the size of the proposed footprint or change in orientation wouldn't eliminate the need for this variance. Standard D: The variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property as permitted under this code. Standard D is met. This variance is abutting the riparian edge zone of Stuckigan Creek approximately in the middle of this lot. This variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the lots adjacent to this property. Standard E: The variance, if granted, does not change the character of the zoning district where the property is located, is in keeping with the intent of the code and does not permit a use not otherwise permitted in the district in which the property lies. Standard D is met. The proposed use does not change the character of the zoning district or the intent of the code. A single-family residence is permitted in the R10 district. Standard F: The variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. Standard F is met. The proposed location of the structure will not adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of the people of the municipality. Standard G: Persons with disabilities are provided with access as required by the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, and reasonable accommodations. Standard G is met. This standard is not applicable to a single-family residence. Standard H: The variance, granted, is the minimum variance that will make possible reasonable use of the land. Standard H is not met. This variance is not needed to construct a single-family residence on this lot. The R10 district accounts for the need of unique and creative design to construct. The applicant is currently showing a footprint of approximately 6,468 square feet in a north-south orientation. The use of creative design and a reduction in the size of the proposed footprint would still allow the applicant the rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the R10 district. According to Watershed Management Services, Stuckigan Creek is not currently located within the platted easement. Understanding this, along with the applicant's concept building design, does not demonstrate this variance request is the minimum that will make possible reasonable use of the land. Other agency comments and public comments. Reviewing agency comments are included in Attachment 3, starting on page 29 of your packet. Watershed Management Services was the only agency that objected to this encroachment with the following: The location of the stream is not where the platted easement currently shows it. The footprint and location of the structure could be rotated slightly to eliminate the need for this variance and encroachment into the riparian edge zone setback. There's also, like I mentioned earlier, a late-on-the-table submittal from the public. It's on your items as H3 supplementary packet number one. Therefore, the department finds that standards B, C, and H are not met, and standards A, D, E, F, and G are met. Therefore, the department must recommend denial of the variance. If after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to conditions 1, 2, and 3 found on page 8 of your staff packet. Unlike the majority of the dimensional variance cases that the board reviews, there is currently no structure on this parcel, and the petitioner is being proactive in their approach to go through the necessary steps prior to construction to acquire this variance. I can answer any questions that the board might have, and the petitioner is in the attendance.
Are there any questions of staff by the board? Dave?
Through the chair. Just a point of clarification on this creek easement. It's based on the actual location of the ordinary high water of the creek, right?
Through the chair. That is correct, Mr. Hale.
So if the creek wasn't located, we don't really know where this easement is on this as-built survey. Is that correct?
Yes and no. So the platted easement is not where the creek is. The creek has not been surveyed, and that is one of the conditions that we recommend is that the creek actually be surveyed and its location to actually find out if it's the variance is actually even needed or required. Did that answer it, or did I just confuse you more?
Through the chair. It looks to me like we don't have enough information to grant a variance if we don't know where the location of that easement is.
That is correct.
Then why are we here?
I'd put it to the petitioner, but the petitioner based their variance on what the platted creek alignment was from the original plat from 2001 without having it surveyed.
I see. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by the applicant?
This is Edward Ernest, and he's going to be speaking on my behalf.
Do you have any questions of staff?
Yeah, he said that it wasn't surveyed. I'm holding the survey that we had edged survey due, and it is dated 9/12/2022, and that should have been included in the packet. So he's saying that the creek isn't surveyed, but I'm holding a current survey that we paid for.
According to Watershed Management, the platted easement that is on the survey is not the actual location of the creek.
Do you have any other questions of staff?
No.
Okay. So the next thing is to state your name and spell it for the record.
My name is Edward Ernest, E-D-W-A-R-D-E-R-N-E-S-T.
Thank you. Please present your case. Wait a minute. Wait, wait. Forgot something. All right. The procedure by which the public may speak to the board. After the staff presentation is complete on public hearing items, the chair will ask the applicant to state their case. The applicant, including all of his or her representatives, has 10 minutes for presentation and may reserve time for rebuttal at the end of the public hearing. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests with the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. A concurring vote of a majority of the fully constituted membership of the board minus those excused by conflicts of interest shall be required to grant a variance. For our variance to be granted, all eight standards must be substantially met, and all five of the members in attendance must agree. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff shall then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The chair will then open the hearing to public testimony on the issue, and persons wishing to testify follow the time limits established in the rules of procedure. Representatives of groups, such as community councils and PTAs, et cetera, have five minutes. Individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the board. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the board. Time is kept by the secretary. The display at the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed, then turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony, and at the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. An individual may have appeal rights related to any action the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals takes. The parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to a superior court. Okay. Now, please present your case.
All right. So this is a little nerve-wracking for me. So I presented a whole speech, so I can just read it. I don't want to seem rude for doing so, but I figured I'd probably get my nerves.
That's fine.
So, hello. Thank you for taking the time to hear our request and allow us to address some issues and concerns that have been brought up in the Planning Department's report. Little history of ourselves. We were both raised in Anchorage and are graduates of East High School and also UAA. We have been driving Stuckigan Heights for decades, dreaming that one day we would have our dream house on the hill. We bought the property a couple years ago and set out to build our dream house to live in and raise our three girls. We hired a builder slash general contractor, and we paid to have the plans drafted, but due to irresectable differences, we parted ways with the builder, but with our plans and dream in hand. Early last year, through our own research, we discovered that there are not only setbacks from the lot line, but also from the creek. These setbacks combined made it so that not only could we not build the house that we had paid and had drafted, but that not many houses would fit between the 40-foot lot line and the 100-foot creek setback. Through more research, we were able to find that the MOA code allows for 50-foot setback versus the platted 100-foot setback. At this time, we also asked about the creek riparian variance. As we had the house design already completed, we were verbally told not to apply for the variance. From here, to not put all of our eggs in one basket, we pursued the plat note change and also pursued an application to move the creek with the Army Corps of Engineers. This, although an expensive option, will allow us the required space to build the house within the impending or without impeding the protected zone. Through that application, the Army Corps of Engineers recommended a variance over a creek move. After they spoke with the MOA, we were told to apply for the variance. I'm going to read a few lines off of the Army Corps of Engineer, Greg Mazur. He wrote, "As discussed, we find finding a way to build your residence at the parcel without relocating Stuckigan Creek would likely cause much less environmental impact." Further on, he says, "I discussed the situation with Mr. Jeffrey Oubanos of the municipality, who told me that a variance could be issued to allow the house within 50-foot stream buffer, though it would need to be placed outside the inner 25-foot buffer." This next email was the reply that I got after speaking with Jeffrey post that email. And he wrote in his email, "In general, the variance process is less intense and less processed than relocating the stream, which is the typical option of last resort. I express to the Corps that it is probably worth your time to exhaust the MOA variance process before seeking approval to move the stream." So that's what we're here today for. "We understand that the riparian zone does allow for property owner uses. As stated in the MOA code 21.07.020, natural resource protection under the Section B.9.E. stream setbacks, some examples of permitted activities in this zone are residential landscaping, including the removal of trees and planting grass. These are permanent disturbances of this zone and habitat. Accessory structures less than 150 feet and additionally decks not exceeding 500 square feet. This is placing a structure within the riparian zone that can remain indefinitely. There is no stated limit that these structures can remain within the zone or cannot remain in the zone. The variance is similar to the building of these structures or the deck, but the request to be a permanent foundation. The cutting of trees and shrubs, the building of a deck, and accessory structures are all actions that can perceived as permanent changes within the riparian zone. These approved uses and activities listed out in the MOA code are an acknowledgement of the property owner's engagement within the zone to modify and use that land. The request for the variance to build the primary house is just like these pre-approved activities within the riparian zone. It is a change to a dedicated zone, but with the conditions and measures to ensure minimal disturbance and damage to the habitat. Other options that we've looked at was to move the creek, which would create not only hardship on us as the landowners, but also the impact of the land and downstream habitats. Another is to regrade the property to accept the house foundation, i.e. move the house." Page 12 of your guys' packet shows a slope that they've attached. Showing the slope of the property is not going from the lowest elevation to the highest, which is east to west, but cutting across the contour lines north and south, thus drastically reducing the calculated slope of the property. This is deceiving and not the true representation of the actual slope on the property. The topical graph map, which is on page 22, that was provided with the application, will show that the southwest portion of the lot, which is the area that has been deemed buildable, is much steeper than the north-south calculation, which shows a very limited slope as it is cross-sectional to the mountain. Secondly, the north-south slope calculation is cross-sectional to the creek, meaning that the slope calculation is that of both sides of the creek and not just the side that has been deemed buildable. Therefore, it does not adequately represent the steep terrain that is on the buildable landslide of the creek, the south side, per the Planning Department's review. Lastly, the notion made that there was 60,000 square feet of buildable space has not taken into account any setbacks from the creek, lot line, or the septic. The 50-foot creek setback, the 40-foot lot line setback, and the current location of an existing septic system, which is now non-buildable land. I'd like to draw attention to the fact that other properties in the same neighborhood have built within the riparian zone. One example is 9400 Midway, which shares a lot line with us on the plat. Their property is 6.29 acres, which is 3.59 acres larger than our lot. Their terrain is relatively flat enough to allow them to have a tennis court. Stuckigan Creek also runs through their property, and according to MOA GIS mapping, their house is built 32 feet from the creek's edge, and the attached structure to the house is built 28.4 feet from the creek's edge. Again, this property is adjacent to ours. This is just one example of a property owner being permitted to build and occupy within the riparian zone of Stuckigan Creek. The setback, the terrain/slope, and most certainly the creek's location bisecting the middle of the property are not self-imposed. Therefore, we feel that all of these factors combined, that the criteria has been met for the requirements of the planning board. We understand that the property has its uniqueness to the lot and that the building of the primary residence. We also feel that we would be deprived of the rights of other properties enjoying the same district if we were not allowed to build as designed. For starters, we've already reduced the property by half due to the creek intersecting the middle and has no road access on the far side. So the buildable space is further reduced by the setbacks and the steep slope. Knowing all the lot lines in the district have creek, not all of the lots have creeks bisecting through them, so I would say that we are faced with a non-self-imposed hardship. We are trying to follow all legal channels to ensure building, and us occupying the property is not harming the habitat, both aquatic and land, but yet still permitting us to build and reside as the house was designed. The MOA's application for variance, the application for stream channel alterations, and the Army Corps of Engineers' application to move the creek are all legal avenues put in place to allow property owners to still have access to use the land commonly enjoyed by other property owners. We are not seeking to reduce the riparian zone for the whole creek, but only for a small section where the corner of the proposed residence would cross. We hope that we are able to convey the difficulty of the property and that we are trying to work with the property's unique features, conform to all laws, statutes, and codes, but also be permitted to build the designed house and raise our family on this amazing piece of land in Stuckigan Heights. I thank you for your time.
You have 50 seconds left for rebuttal. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members?
So I'm just looking at your survey here. Did your surveyor at all survey the creek on Lot 2 when he was trying to figure out the ordinary high watermark?
The ordinary high watermark was surveyed by the municipality of Anchorage, not by this surveyor. It was performed by Kyle Cunningham of Watershed.
Okay. I mean, just by looking at this, it, I mean, it looks like it, typically what I've seen in the past is when you have a platted stream, and then you go back and you survey it X years later, there's variation from the previous setbacks that were platted. And just looking at this, it looks like the center line here matches up perfectly with the property on Lot 2. So maybe Kyle Cunningham went upstream then, and he just surveyed up and downstream of the area on your lot, because the lines, they line up perfectly.
The border of Lot 2 and our Lot 3 is actually a pond, so it shows it as a creek here, but there's a pond on that property line that I have, that we have one-third of.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Hale?
Thank you, through the chair. So Kyle works at the Watershed, and when he surveys things, he uses handheld GPS. It's not all that accurate. So he's doing it for a GIS system, so none of the GIS are really all that accurate. So when you're pulling distances and stuff off of it, it's not, it's not right. I mean, it's close sometimes, but it's not survey-grade. And these easements for the creek setback are based on the actual location of the mean high water, ordinary high water, what you want to call it. And so it has to be surveyed. You can't, you can't show where these easements are without the land surveyor surveying them in relation to the property line. I don't know why the surveyor didn't survey that. I don't even know how he placed it in here, because you can't do it off GIS. You have to survey the property quarters, you have to survey all the improvements, including the creek, and relate them all to the boundary, or, you know, we don't have any basis for giving a variance. We can't quantify the dimension from the house. We don't know if your house is actually in it or not until it's actually surveyed. And when he surveys the ordinary high water... And when he surveys the ordinary high water, then he'll offset the lines 25 feet based on where it really is. So, I mean, as a board, we don't have enough information to give you a variance right now. Did you talk to the surveyor at all about locating the creek, actually surveying it?
I guess there's a lot of confusion, because the creek has been staked by edge survey 25 feet and 50-foot stakes on our property. They have also been called back out after the septic system was put in, which is the one that has been submitted, that shows where the septic pipes are in relation to the creek to ensure that we were within the permit, the MOA permit of the septic system. So I guess I don't understand where the confusion is of not accepting the survey, because we have stakes running our property that says 25-foot high watermark, 50-foot high watermark, and then we squared out where the house goes, just the wife and I, not a surveyor, and it exceeds into that 50-foot stake.
So that doesn't show up on this ASBIL, though. I mean, he doesn't have any dimensions for how he established this creek. I mean, it's just put in there. So if he actually surveyed it...
It has been surveyed, yes, prior to putting the septic system in.
That creek should be shown on your ASBIL, and there should be something that says 25 foot from the creek to that easement, so that everyone knows that it's based on the actual surveyed location. He should be certifying the location of that creek. If he staked it in the field, that's fine, but we can't see that. We have to have it on the ASBIL.
Okay, so you're saying that the survey is not adequate?
It's not complete.
For the...
Yeah.
That's beyond my knowledge and my expertise.
So he went out and he located the septic system, the water system, you know, those are all dimensioned, as you can see, but the creek is not. So, I mean, we don't know how much variance you even need, or if you need one at all. If the creek moved some, and then you offset the 25 feet, it could be that it doesn't even hit your house, and you don't need a variance. I don't know. You know, we don't have enough...
Correct. The variance request is because we crossed the 50-foot stake that the surveyor put in the ground.
Okay, I'm just saying that we don't have enough information, you know, to see that on this ASBIL. So it's difficult for us. We haven't been out in the field with you guys.
Right.
So it's just a... It's an accounting item for all the ASBIL items on the... I mean, since the easement is based on the actual location, we have to see that, just like the house or the septic. So, I mean, it's incomplete, and I don't... Personally, I can't grant a variance, you know, without having real survey information. So he may have it, and he just needs to update the ASBIL, you know, and then you can come back and show it to us or whatever, but currently, I can't support it. And I had one other... One other question is, can you twist the thing a little bit so that you don't need a variance?
Just the way that the windows and everything are designed for the view, if you twist it, then you're not looking at, you know, the view of what we paid the property for.
Yeah.
I mean, the squareness of the house is squared up with the view, so if we twisted it, then you wouldn't be able to see what we're shooting for.
Yeah, and it's hard to grant variances based on views. I mean, it's... If you can get him to show you where the creek is and show you where the actual location of these easements are, and then, you know, try to be creative about how you place that house, you might be able to fit it all in there, what you want, and you're just gonna have to maybe give up a little bit. But currently, I don't know how I can support a variance, and I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant by board members? Mr. Smythe, do you have any questions?
Mr. Smythe, are you still on the bridge, ma'am?
Yeah, I apologize. No question.
Mr. ...
Oh, sorry. Mr. Quinn.
Do you understand what Mr. Hale's talking about as far as showing the creek on the property, or on the plot plan?
To be honest with you, I don't.
Okay, because it sounds like what happened is your surveyor went out there, he located the septic, he located the well, and then he put a bunch of staking along the high-watermark of the creek. But then, so you guys can see where that's delineated. But then what needs to happen is he needs to shoot points where those stakes are and put it on a piece of paper, and then you can see how this whole thing works out. And that's kind of what my original question was. Typically, you know, creeks aren't straight lines, so typically you have these platted creek easements that were done, you know, 20 years ago, and then over time, the creek kind of meanders and it changes, and then those setbacks get adjusted from that. So that change just isn't being shown here. And just like what Dave is saying, I mean, I have seen creeks meander, you know, to your favor. Maybe it's to your detriment. We just don't really know right now. And so what needs to happen is the surveyor needs to go back out there and shoot all those points, put it on a piece of paper, put your footprint on here, and then we'll know. You know, I mean, you could get in a situation where something gets approved, and all that data comes back later, and it still doesn't work, you know, because that's a part of the permitting process to build your house, is showing that, you know, those points on your plot plan. So I just wanted to reiterate that a little bit.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Mr. Hale.
To the chair. Are you guys working with another design professional, like an architect or something, to place your house on the property?
No, we're doing it ourselves at this point.
Okay, it's a good idea to get someone involved, because, you know, the way that they do this is the surveyor will locate all these things, they'll give them a CAD drawing or whatever, and then they can place the house so that it falls within, you know, the acceptable areas between setbacks and easements and all that stuff. If you're just trying to do it, you know, by a hand sketch or something, it gets difficult because it's not very accurate. And if you're not working with a design professional and a surveyor who are both working together to make sure that it complies with all this, you may end up with a house that's in an easement or something, and then you got to come back and ask for another variance. So doing it just on paper by yourself is kind of a risk.
So, like I said, we hired a builder, contractor, and a drafter, and they failed to recognize the creek setback or the lot line setback in the design of the house.
Okay.
So that's why we parted ways.
So I... Yeah, I mean, if you're still working with anyone else, or you just go back to them and say, "Hey, we need to base this on the actual creek location what the surveyor can give them," and then he'll give them the easement based on that actual location, and then you can place that thing, twist it, whatever you got to do to comply. It's, you know, it's why it takes a design team and to work with the construction team as well to develop land. It's more than just throwing a house up. But that's, I guess, all I have.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Then we'll open for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? Anyone at all?
I have one phone testimony that will have to call in.
Okay.
Is there some mechanism for allowing them to get back out of this and get more information?
We can postpone.
Because we deny it, can they bring it back? I don't know what to deny it, if it just cuts it off, because they just need more information.
Kirsten, this is Paul Hatcher at the Zoning and Board Examiners Appeals.
Hi, I can barely hear you.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me better now?
I can hear you better now.
All righty. Are you testifying as an individual or representing a group?
An individual.
All righty, you have three minutes to testify.
So I had a question in consideration of...
Hello, this is Kirsten.
Kirsten, this is Paul Hatcher at the Zoning and Board Examiners Appeal.
Hi, I can barely hear you.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me better now?
Can you turn your YouTube off or mute it?
I can... Yeah, let me mute. Okay, so tell me when you're ready for me.
We are ready now.
Great. Well, good evening, and thank you to the board for serving and for others in attendance for caring about our community. My name is Krista Mainland, and my husband and I own land near Miss Ernest's parcel. My parents moved to Stuck again Heights in 1974 when I was two. They built the seventh house on the hill, as it is known. Today, there are upwards of 300 homes. I lived there until I went away to college and again when I returned home. After college, knowing how special the Stuck again area is, I spent my life savings and bought a lot from Roger Cremon, the man who homesteaded there in the 60s and subdivided much of the neighborhood. My husband proposed to me on that lot. When we were married, he called it my dowry. To get to the area of the Hillside North Edition Number Nine, the area being discussed today, you must drive through miles with a bicentennial park. This neighborhood consists of the 30 acres on which Roger built his home and raised his family when he homesteaded the land. When he decided to build another home a little higher up the hill, he subdivided the parcel and sold the eight lots. The lot Mr. Ernest spoke of earlier with the tennis court that impeded the riparian zone was Roger's home that he built when he homesteaded. To understand the neighborhood, you need to understand Roger Cremon. Roger's the man that spent what in today's dollars would be $300,000 to preserve a tree that had grown over a large rock. He divided the road and built it around the rock rather than remove it and name the road Middle Rock. He loved the land he lived on and wanted nothing more than to be a caretaker of its natural beauty. Before buying my current lot, I walked around all eight lots with Roger and discussed the merits of each. On Miss Ernest's parcel, he explained how it was a limited building site due to the existence of the creek. He very thoughtfully mapped out each of the eight lots and made sure there was ample space to build a home while preserving the integrity of the landscape. While we were walking on the land, Roger and I watched the lynx silently stalk and prey on a rabbit. I've lived in Alaska my entire life, and I've never felt closer to nature than in that moment, in that place. I can only begin to describe to you how special, incredibly special, this neighborhood is. I feel that Miss Ernest's desired encroachment into the banks of Stuck again Creek would not only adversely affect the creek and the surrounding wetlands, but also go directly against the wishes of the architect and caretaker of this neighborhood. There's plenty of space on the two-and-a-half acre parcel with the current zoning to build a lovely home that will exist in harmony with the landscape. I strongly urge you to deny Miss Ernest's request for a variance. Thank you for your consideration.
Are there any questions of Ms. Langland by the board members? Saying none, are there any questions of Ms. Langland by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions by the applicant?
No, ma'am.
Then, is there anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Okay. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, Madam Chair.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal? You have 50 seconds.
No, ma'am, I don't. Thank you.
Then we'll close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the board. There's a couple of different ways we can go with this. We can proceed with the case, or we can postpone it for more information. And so may I have a motion of some kind?
I motion to postpone the case.
I got Mr. Hale. Mr. Hale.
In the case of... What are we? 2023-0023, I move that we postpone this case until we have enough information to determine the exact location of the creek and the setbacks and how it'll impact the proposed location of the house.
And Mr. Quinn, you seconded that motion?
Yeah, I would also support Mr. Hale's motion. Yeah, I just think that you guys have to go back to your surveyor and get him to stake out that stream setback and lay this thing out so you have all the information. I mean, even looking at this right now, like, if you look at your southeast building corner, it looks like it's basically touching that setback. That's almost impossible for you guys to accurately do by yourselves when you're just out in the field pulling measurements. So I'm going to support the motion, and we're not killing this. We're just giving you the opportunity to bring some more information back to us so we can take another look at it.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to postpone the variance for additional information on the location of the creek. Will the maker of the motion please speak to the motion?
I guess, first of all, are you guys amenable to postponing rather than us, you know, denying it? Does that sound like it'll work for you?
Yes, it will.
Because we're, you know, we're not trying to shoot down people's dreams. We're, you know, if we can figure out a way to make it so that, you know, this works out for everybody, that's great. And I do think that, I think it would behoove you to not just get your surveyor to get that information, but also to work with another design professional to locate that house. Typically, the way it goes is the surveyors go out and they survey everything that's there, and then they put in the property boundary, all of the easements, setbacks, and all that stuff, and they give that to, like, an architect or something, and they'll take that information and put in proposed stuff, you know, wells and septic and houses and all that, and they can locate it very precisely in the same drawing and coordinate system that the surveyor has. So then, once they have it all figured out, and it meets code and everything, the surveyor can go back and stake those corners of the house so that you're absolutely sure that it's in the right spot. And it's not going to cause you problems, because what happens is people will stake it in the wrong spot, just based on some willy-nilly field work they're doing. And then 20 years from now, you'll try to sell your house and find out that it actually is in the easement, and that's a big deal. So the whole process is meant to stop that from happening. So I think that if we postpone here, we have an opportunity for you guys to go back to your design professionals and get some better advice and better information and move forward that way, so you're not having to deal with it later. So hopefully, that's something that is a positive for you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, are you ready for the question?
This is Dale.
Okay.
I just want to chime in that I completely... Thank you. I just, to the chair, I want to say I completely agree with Mr. Hale and Mr. Quinn's assessment of the situation from the beginning. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the question is on the adoption of the motion to postpone for further information. A yes vote will postpone, and a no vote will not postpone, and we will continue on. So please vote. I guess we need to do that by voice because of...
They can do their votes.
Okay.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so there are five votes in the affirmative and zero votes in the negative. So this case is postponed for further information, and I have a question for staff. So this won't in any way, they won't have to pay again when it comes up because we've postponed it?
That's correct, Madam Chair. In fact, this variance is actually, until October of this year, there is no fee for this variance.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's no fee that they'll have to, no additional costs through the municipality that they'll have to pay. I'm assuming they're going to have to find a, get some more information from the surveyor that might cost them, so...
Okay.
But nothing from the municipality.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Okay. We're postponed, and as soon as you get the information, then let Paul know, and we'll continue on.
Okay. That was my question, is how do we go about getting more information to the...
Just contact them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. All right, so I think we're done. There's no reports. I don't have a report. Laurie doesn't have a report. There's no committees. Any other board comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.